With a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance, if you would, if you feel like it. Would you please join us? Ms. Isby, would you word our prayer, please?
Go by with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the abundant blessings that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for this city that you blessed us with to be stewards of. We just ask, Lord, that every decision that we make, that at the end, that you give the glory that you're so deserving of. In your name we pray.
And? Now call this meeting in order. Ms. Hurd, would you call the row, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes is out. Mr. Spurgers?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Hawks?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Mr. Grimes had a small medical procedure that kept him home tonight, but we know he's listening in. We all hope you recover quickly, David. Okay, council tonight, we are looking at the ordinance for the upcoming sales tax election. Before we move, I'd like to take a motion to waive the three readings.
I'll move.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass the seven to zero.
Just, just point of order, just to make sure that we're okay. Are we okay with waiving the three readings? Wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
All right. So, council, why don't we take about 10 minutes? You guys read over this, if you hadn't had a chance to do it, and then we'll come back and start talking. For you out in the audience, there's some copies of the ordinance on the chairs in the back there.
Is this the same as what was emailed to us previously?
Yes.
Okay.
I got a question and I got a motion to make. The order that is on the ballot is not the one we discussed at the last meeting. We had the public safety, streets, and then the four bond issues. And I'd like-
Order that they would pay on the ballot?
I'd like for it to appear like that when we discussed it last week.
And you did mention that, Mr. Jones, so that won't be a problem, will it, Gordon?
Talking to Felicia.
Okay. That's, that's, I'm assuming that's the way the council as a whole wants to do this? Okay?
That's the way we talked about it.
Okay. That's how it's talked about. All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
But, do we want to?
It would be safety, which now includes CIOC, for sure.
Public safety, streets.
Mm-hmm.
Streets and drainage, which-
Right.
Sidewalks.
Anything transportation done.
Right.
And others would be the four bond issues.
And then the four bond, bonded projects. Got it?
If I understand correctly, then, I can do this right now. If I've got laptop in the car, I can go do that and we can get it here and I'll email it to Felicia or something. We can get it in just a second.
Okay.
If we want to do that tonight.
All right. Thank you, Gordon.
So, public safety, one, streets and drainage, two, and then just the bond questions in the same order.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry I was not here last week. Was out of town. Is there a reason for doing it that way? Just a question.
That's what we decided on last week.
It's what I get for not being here. Sunny, sunny beaches.
I got called every day at the post office.
I know.
Piece of mail to somebody.
I'm, I'm hoping, since Gordon's out, maybe one of the other gentlemen could answer. And I talked, asked this question of the mayor earlier today. So, if any of the bonded projects come back to be extremely over what we have for the not to exclude amount, what happens? Do we, can we make the decision not to do any of the projects? Or just do the ones that fall within budget? Or? And I'm talking like twice as much or something.
Paul Phillips was cruising the sentence. I'd actually probably let Gordon opine of that, but I think if it's voted.
Ms. Mel, Ms. Mel has a question for you, Gordon.
One of the bond questions approved that comes in twice, or just making that up, of the valid amount. Can they agree not to move forward?
Yes, it's just authorized. It's not otherwise directed. I mean, you don't have to issue the bond.
Thank you. May I ask your question, Ms. Mel?
Yes. And then what happens to any, I guess, I'm making the assumption, they all pass and then some are, you know, then the sales tax collector would go for any of the projects that were-
That's right.
And would be paid off sooner than-
That's right.
Okay. That, that's, that's, I just wanted to kind of, mostly for me, but also for, I think, people out there, because we all, I think, share concerns about construction costs and things like that. So, okay.
Also, for the sake of transparency, though, my understanding, and maybe Felicia or Mr. Gates are the ones to speak to this, but there, we're not, we're not throwing darts in the dark at price here.
Right.
I mean, we've, the city has met with Conne Corp., we've reviewed infrastructure expense. These are, these are far more than rough pencil. But ac-
Stupid mics.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Who verified those numbers? Felicia? The numbers for construction?
Yeah.
Could you come to the mic, please?
Thank you, Jamie. Jamie Gates, 900 Oak Street. The, for instance, Lake Conway project is, has many phases. And then we have construction estimates that were provided by the engineer and design firm. And so the not to exceed case there would be you, you establish scope and then you build until your, till your dollar amount and, and you stop. And, you know, just full transparency, we've had conversation with the partner agencies that we've talked about. And, you know, there'll be a opportunity to match sources and uses and different dollars. And so maybe our dollars are best spent with this feature and another agency's dollars are best spent on that feature. But, you know, the scope of that plan exceeds the amount that's shown here. And what we will do is build to that point and acknowledge that that plan goes years and phases into the future. For the grand theater, you know, we've had a set of, you know, designs and full, full designs and plans for a while. We've had those soft bid, you know, locally, just to get a sharp number and have a pretty high level of confidence on that. But obviously, I want to be clear, all of these projects would go through public procurement processes and procedures. But, so each, each of the projects is a, is a little bit different. I mean, so for the amphitheater and convention center, kind of relied on the industry professionals, the third party folks, to tell us, you know, what they thought it would cost. And then also look at some other peer-type facilities. North Shore is a, a big phase and you only go maybe a, a third of the way into that multi-year phase. And then the grand has kind of something that's pretty, pretty sharp to a contractor saying, here's what it would take to follow these plans. So they're all a little bit different, but you're going to be bound by the ordinance on the, the not to exceed.
And the two that I want to specifically know where these numbers came from would be the outdoor performance theater-
Mm-hmm.
And the convention center. Can you tell me where we got those numbers?
Yeah, I think just, one, like I said, looking at similar projects that have taken place recently around the country. And then, two, also talking to prospective third-party providers. And there, there are multiple folks in that, in that business on the convention center side, less so on the amphitheater.
Thank you.
But if you're asking if, if, if we came up with the numbers, no.
And I think one other point, as people are looking over the ordinance, and I think Felicia emailed us, that this includes all bond-related costs also-
Yes.
In the, in the figures that we have in here.
Mr. Wilber, just clarification point for myself. For the projects that we're going to bring out of the ground, that has an end date on the money that we will be collecting. Is that correct?
Underwriters are talking about 25 years. But they'll pay off, you know, sooner than that. And the less that are issued, of course, the sooner they pay off.
Sure.
So, but 25 years would be the maturity. They would have to be paid off by that amount of time. And, you know, there's coverage built in, so they will certainly pay off in that amount of time.
And the other three things that will be on the ballot will be public safety, streets, and the third one-
Well, that's just public safety and then streets and drainage are together. So two other things.
That is a perpetual, never-ending-
Unless you want to call another election and change the uses or terminate them or reduce them, or, but it would-
Just wanted to make sure I had my batting order straight. Thank you, Gordon. So, Mr. Jones, under what you're asking, you're wanting to put public safety first? Is that right? On, on the, on the ballot?
Public safety and street drainage. And then we had the bond. It was four, five, and six, three, four, five, and six.
Okay, okay. Does it make any difference which is three, which is four, which is five?
First two. Like we said last week, public safety, street and drain.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just want to mention something. We're looking at a, at about a 30-year stated maturity, and then the projected payoff would be less than that based on the surplus tax collections, which I think Mr. Phillips has run numbers. There's somewhere between 19 and 20 years projected payoff, but with a stated maturity of 30 years. But all the surplus tax goes to pay off the debt. So if the tax grows, it can pay it off faster. Consequently, if it slows down, it may not pay off as fast. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Trumper. Appreciate that. Okay. Council, what we're voting on tonight, or what you're voting on tonight, I'm sorry, is take a sales tax to the people of Conway for vote on November 18th, 2025. You've waived the three readings. At this point in time, I'll take a motion. I'm understanding that it's police, fire, streets. And in the, and in the police and fire, we included the CIOC. And then you have the music venue, the camp, convention center, the grand theater, and Lake Conway. Correct?
Correct.
All right. This time, I'll take a motion to approve this ordinance.
A move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance with an emergency clause? I'm sorry, let's back up to again. Motion, Mr. Haw-
Amended as well.
Have a motion and a second to pass this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion?
This is a motion on the amended ordinance from tonight, not a motion on the ordinance.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I think I misunderstood your question. I, I still would like you to read it by title only three times.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I, I just meant you didn't have to read the whole thing. And then, and then a separate vote on the emergency clause.
Let the voice of the wampus cats read. Ordinance number is what?
Seventy.
Ms. Hurd?
Seventy.
Oh, 2570.
It's ordinance 02570. It's an ordinance calling and setting a date for a special election on the questions of the issuance by the City of Sales and Use Tax Capital Improvement Bonds for various specified purposes and levying local sales and use taxes for various specified purposes. Levying a local sales and use tax at the rate of three eighths of 1% for the future, or for the purpose of retiring such bonds. Levying a one quarter of 1% local sales and use tax for public safety capital improvements. Levying a one-eighth of 1% local sales and use tax for streets and drainage and related capital improvements. Prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency. And I'll make a motion. Option of the ordinance, and then we would go to the second reading. Is that right? Correct.
Correct.
Take a motion for adoption of the ordinance with the emergency clause. We need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Second reading. An ordinance calling and setting a date for a special election on the questions of the issuance by the City and Sales and Use Tax Capital Improvement Bonds for various specified purposes. Levying local sales and use taxes for various specified purposes. Levying a local sales and use tax at the rate of three eighths of 1% for the purpose of retiring such bonds. Levying a one quarter of 1% local sales and use tax for public safety capital improvements. Levying a one-eighth of 1% local sales and use tax for streets and drainage and related capital improvements. Prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency. That's the second reading. Take a motion and a second?
A move.
Second.
With the emergency clause, have a motion and a second?
A move.
On the second reading. Mr. Hawkins?
This is the third reading. An ordinance calling and setting a date for a special election on the questions of the issuance by the City of Sales and Use Tax Capital Improvement Bonds for various specified purposes and levying local sales and use taxes for various specified purposes. Levying a local sales and use tax at the rate of three eighths of 1% for the purpose of retiring such bonds. Levying a one quarter of 1% local sales and use tax for public safety capital improvements. Levying a one-eighth of 1% local sales and use tax for streets and drainage and related capital improvements. Prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
A motion for the adoption.
With the-
Emergency clause. Emergency clause.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And the emergency clause, Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Those both pass seven to zero. Okay, I think that's all we have. That, unless there's anything, we go back, we go back to regular council meetings next Tuesday night, second, fourth Tuesday, and it's hard to believe it's September's here already. The holiday season will be upon us fairly quickly. With that, council, thank you for your work, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.